Good evening. Welcome to the April 23, 2024 City Council Meeting. The meeting is hereby called to order. Members of the public may attend this City Council Meeting in person or may watch and listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel 8 WCTV and at the city's website at www.yzeta.org/wctv. Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person at the meeting in advance or by logging into the Zoom call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in the meeting, you will be seen and heard in our council chambers and the cable channel. You will be asked to unmute, and then you may begin your comment. All public comments must include your full name and address. Second item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please rise and follow along. Oh, there we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think that is a testament to old habits die hard. Our flags, for those of you who may not be aware, are normally on the other side of the room, but we had the State of the City, and they got moved. All right, next up this evening is the roll call. Let the record reflect that all members of the council are present, with the exception of Councilmember Plekish. Earlier this evening, the council participated in a workshop and reviewed and discussed the following items. Council received an update of Clapridge Park Design and discussed next steps. In addition to the workshop, at approximately six, from 6:00 to 6:30 p.m., a closed meeting of the Wayzetta City Council was held pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D .05 subdivision 3B, the attorney-client privilege exception to the open meeting law, to discuss the following litigation: State of Minnesota by Minnesota Playground Inc., DBA Minnesota-Wisconsin Playground Plaintiff versus City of Wayzetta Defendant. The meeting was closed to permit the city council to meet with its attorneys to review and candidly and openly discuss absolutely confidential and privileged matters related to the above referenced litigation. Next item is for us to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as is? Or would anyone care to make any proposed changes?
I'll make the motion to approve it as is.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Iverson. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes, which takes us into our next item on the agenda, which is the public forum. As a reminder, for those members of the public in attendance tonight who are interested in speaking, we ask that you please state your name, address, indicate if you are representing a group, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. If the item you wish to speak about is something that is on the agenda, for those that are in person, we ask that you fill out a form located at the back of the room and hand it to staff. For those that are watching via Zoom, please send a note via chat to staff. Let them know what agenda item you'd like to speak about, and we will make sure that you have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. We will also require that your camera is turned on when you speak. We do have a number of items on our public forum this evening. We had an intended order, but I think I'm going to suggest that maybe in the interest of being able to get people in and out as quietly and calmly as possible, and by everyone, I mean our four-legged buddies, I would like to propose that our first item under the public forum this evening would be for the swearing-in of our Canine Police Officers Loki and Riggs. City Manager.
There you go. Maybe that was a sign that the microphone didn't go on right away. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. So, in putting together the agenda, working with Chief Schultz, we were very much struggling of how to title this presentation and the celebration, this occasion with our police department. We thought of the barking in, we thought of the wolfing in, even the bow-wow-ing in of our esteemed Canine members of the squad. We settled on swearing-in. It's not going to be your typical swearing-in of our Canines, but it's, but that's okay, and we like that. So Chief Schultz is going to talk about our Canines and kind of officially swear them in to the department.
Fantastic. Good evening, Chief Schultz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Several months ago, a few members of the council had requested that we, as Jeff mentioned, celebrate a couple of our officers in a long overdue swearing-in, and those officers happen to be our two canine officers, not the handlers, but the actual canines, Loki and Riggs. I thought about making a couple cheesy jokes like Jeff did, you know.
We leave those to him.
The dogs were bashful. They didn't want to speak. Raise your right paw. Repeat after me. But seriously, these two are really worthy of some recognition. We thank you for allowing us a few minutes of your time to do that tonight. These dogs, they work as much as all of us do. They work harder than most of us do, and they train way more than anybody on our department. They even have badges. Officer Seeland's badge is 7-2-11, and appropriately enough, his dog Riggs's badge is 7-2-11 and a half. And Sergeant German's badge is 7-2-06. Again, Loki's badge is 7-2-06 and a half. So, kind of indicates a team there, and they truly demonstrate that. I'll let these guys, Officer Seeland and Sergeant German, give you some info on the dogs and what they do. But first, I wanted to thank a few people, including the council, for supporting the inception of this program, recognizing that it was important to the citizens and how much these dogs can really be a tool and add to our officer's safety. I'd also like to thank the generous citizens of our community who, through the help of the Wayzetta Crime Prevention Coalition, were able to very generously help support us in the inception of this program and some of its ongoing efforts. And finally, our canine handlers, Officer Seeland in the back room there, and Sergeant German, who have, with their families, welcomed these dogs into their home, into their families, and have spent countless hours training, caring for the dogs and working with the dogs and, you know, getting them out there in the public, and they're really a great asset. And with that, I'll just invite them up to talk about themselves, introduce themselves, and show you Loki and Riggs.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Manager Dahl. First, I want to echo what the chief said. I want to thank all of you for this opportunity. It's something special to be able to have a dog as a partner, especially one as dedicated as Loki is. A little about Loki, he's three and a half. He's almost four. He's a Belgian Malinois. This is his favorite part of the day. He's probably the few, one of the few that on days off is a little down in the dumps. As soon as he sees a uniform come out, he's doing circles, he's spinning, he just wants to go to work. He loves it more than anything other than his ball. Since these dogs have been on, the short time they've been on, they have both made a pretty significant impact already. Multiple, multiple narcotics fines. Fleeced felons from vehicles have been located. We had a burglar who was doing his best to hide. He failed in that attempt. And four people who lives were endangered were brought back home, who may not have otherwise been. Loki, if you come down to the PD, as City Manager Dahl found out, he will, he will remove property from you that he feels is his. And I'm just going to read a couple. There's something called the Malinois Property Laws. And City Manager Dahl, I'm just going to read two of these of the 10. Number one, if I like it, it's mine. And number 10, if it's yours and I steal it, it's mine. So, he came downstairs, and the city manager came in with a notebook, and Loki just delicately plucked it. Again, thank you, Officer Seeland. Come up and talk about Riggs. And we look forward to many more years.
Wonderful. Thank you, Sergeant. I think Canine Riggs is anxious to get you to speak on his behalf, Officer Seeland.
Yes, thank you. Not to be redundant, but thanks to the council and Madam Mayor for having us and all the support we've received from everyone up here and the Crime Prevention Coalition. This is one of my goals, getting into law enforcement, is to be a handler, and I can check that off the list, so I appreciate that. This is Canine Riggs. He is a three-year-old Belgian Shepherd. He is from Poland. He's a mix between a Malinois and a German Shepherd. I gave him his favorite toy because, as you heard earlier, he likes to bark. He's never played with other dogs, so he's very excited to see Loki and just wants to play. Riggs lives with my family, and I have two boys, middle school and younger, and he has adapted quite well. He knows the difference between work and home. Work is work, and home is belly rubs and playtime, so. He gets along well with the neighbor kids, hasn't flown the coop yet, ran away, which is always a benefit. He's trained in narcotics detection and suspect apprehension. So as Sergeant German has said, he's been successful. He's found a handful of people who have fled after a burglary or motor vehicle theft. We have assisted surrounding agencies a number of times with narcotic sniffs, and those have all proven to be positive and a success, so that's always a benefit. Yeah, he's pretty mellow, believe it or not, but he gets excited pretty quickly, so. Thank you again, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask away.
Wonderful. Thank you. I see they have their badges on already. And typically, when we swear in our officers, there's a pinning, but I guess we can probably forego that. I don't know what we have planned.
I did forget to mention one thing that is sort of appropriate at this time. The last week was spent up at the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association meeting, and our department was fortunate enough to have been awarded the award for Excellence in Innovation for a Small Agency by the Minnesota Chiefs of Police. For, and I'm not going to mince words, it was for Jason German's dedication to starting this canine search and rescue program that's become somewhat of a model now. We were, at one time, the only agency in the state of Minnesota that had a local agency that had a search and rescue dog. I believe there might be one other one now. So there's a trend starting there that we're happy to have started, but it's been, it's been a great tool, so. And it's a well-deserved recognition award for them, so, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Well, I think that certainly I'll say a few words, and then we'll let Riggs and Loki do other things that they enjoy much more than being here in council chambers, much like probably most of you. But, you know, we are in a community that absolutely, we love our dogs. You know, everybody at this dais, we love our dogs. We are just crazy about our four-legged furry friends. And I know that I was personally incredibly excited to hear that we were exploring this and that we actually had a canine program many years ago. So we are bringing this back in its current form, but with new expertise and a new skill set. And so, these dogs, you know, they're every bit a part of our police department as our officers, and we are very proud to have them. And I am proud to say that, you know, we, we have a department that is forward-thinking enough, in a town that is forward-thinking enough to have a resource like Loki and Riggs, and that the rest of the state can recognize its importance and model their programs after us. Especially when we're a town of 4,500 people, that's pretty impressive. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you for your commitment, and thank you to your families for your commitment, taking in a second officer into your home and for, you know, all that you do every single day for all of us. So, and as you mentioned previously, the Crime Prevention Coalition, they have really stepped up and gotten some much-needed gear and equipment for both of them as well, and so we're very appreciative and to the people who donate to the Crime Prevention Coalition as well, so. Thank you very much. All right. I love that picture, by the way. That's the neat, that's a great picture. All right. So we are still in the public forum, and so we will then move on to our other items. And the next item we have is the introduction of Michael Kelly, our motor vehicle clerk, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just say that, looking at our city engineer and public works director, that we so much adore him, respect him, appreciate him, that we thought, let's get another one.
Mike Kelly 2.0.
Yes.
I love it.
So Nick Hyder, our Deputy Registrar of the Motor Vehicle Department, is going to introduce Mike Kelly, another Mike Kelly into our organization. I think they probably have a lot in common, like their name, but a lot of other things that differentiate themselves, and we're really happy for him to be on the team, and Nick's going to talk a little bit more about him.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm introducing Mike Kelly, our newest full-time employee for the Motor Vehicle Department. He comes to us with 20-plus years of motor vehicle experience, so very grateful for that. He originally was with Hennepin County at the Ridgedale Service Center, where we were actually coworkers back in the day. So we sat behind the counter and called numbers together. And then he moved on to Scott County in Shakopee, and that's where he then came to us. Fun fact about that, I actually reside in Shakopee, and he was the one that actually gave me and my wife our marriage certificate, so.
I like that.
Yeah.
It's really cool.
Exactly. He did have a funny joke, and I hope nobody caused offense to any of this, but he had me put my hand down, then he had my wife put her hand on top of that. Or actually, he had my wife put her hand down, and then I put my hand on top of that, and he said, "This time will be your last time you'll have the upper hand," so. It kind of just shows the way he is really good connecting to his customers and his clientele, so I just knew he was going to be a really, really good fit with our department. But before I send him up here, I'd just like to say, like, how lucky we are to have him here. He is great with customers, easygoing personality, and I just know that our department is, thrives off of good customer service and whatnot, so it's just going to make it an even better DMV to go to within the metro or even within the whole state of Minnesota. So I'd like to introduce to you Mike Kelly.
Wonderful.
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor.
Good evening. Well, so, do you have any other great anecdotes about issuing marriage licenses or vehicle tabs that you can share with us?
Actually, I'm really humbled. You can't really follow up canine heroes with the DMV guy.
You don't give yourself enough credit. We have a very high Google rating, and we are the best of the best, not only our police department, but our motor vehicles. I mean, as is evidenced by our Google reviews. That's right. Now, it is, there are very big shoes to fill, and we do strangely take a lot of pride in the service that our motor vehicles provides and the great accolades that we get. So we are very pleased to have you and that you can lend your many years of expertise in the field to the citizens of Wayzetta.
Well, there are other people there that have many years of experience too, and it's, it's really good that we work together so well, and even just in a short amount of time.
Well, that's wonderful. Well, we are very pleased to have you. Thank you for, for taking the leap over to the north side and spending some time with us. And certainly, I like the story of, it's funny how things can come full circle. So that's really neat, and it's a great guy to run the ship over there, so we're very appreciative of him as well. Wonderful. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. This is like the best meeting ever, by the way. That's great. We have another great item in our public forum this evening, and that is the presentation of the 2024 Mayor's Award for Historic Preservation by the Wayzetta Heritage Preservation Board. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this award has been a, kind of an infrequent, quasi-annual award that the HBB has led. It's really dedicated to the preservation and renovation of some of the real noteworthy homes in town that haven't been torn down or scraped for new development. So kind of a, an award that is really significant in our community now that we've seen so much development going on. And our assistant planner Val Quarles is going to provide a little bit more detail, and she's brought some friends with too.
Wonderful. Good evening.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. It's very weird being behind the lecter, and I am not used to this. I think it was when I was introduced a couple of years ago that I was over here. But for those of you who don't know, my name is Val. I do a lot of development and planning work here with the city, but I also have the extremely fun privilege of being the staff liaison for the Heritage Preservation Board. I have a couple of their members with me today, Judy, Sue, and Kim. And today, we're here to present this year's Mayor's Award to the home located at 110 Minnetonka Avenue South, owned by Beth Troutman, and I'm going to take a stab at your last name, David Rusciano. We'll call it good. The intent of the Mayor's Award is to recognize historic homes in Wayzetta that have recently undergone renovations, that preserve their historic charm while positioning them to survive and thrive for future decades. The Preservation Board nominated 110 Minnetonka because it's undergone at least two major renovations over the last couple of years. And the work that's been completed over that time, not only by Beth and David, but also by the last couple of owners, and in fact, all of the owners going back to 1920, 1925 or 1917, I'd have to double-check, and if the word's wrong, we'll fix it. We think that this house exemplifies those qualities. So on behalf of the city of Wayzetta and along with Mayor Muton, we're So on behalf of the city of Wayzetta and along with Mayor Mouton, we're happy to award the 2024 Mayor's Award to 110 Minnetonka Avenue South. Beth, David, come up.
So first, I'd like to, tonight, for the purpose of this, I'm actually a McGill. The name goes back over 100 years. My grandfather, Jay Leonard McGill, was one of the first dentists in Wayzetta, and his office was located just west of Ben &amp; Jerry's over 100 years ago. My uncle David was a dentist in Wayzetta, and my cousin Jim was in the Fazan Building and recently retired.
There's a long history of McGill dentists in Wayzetta and volunteerism in the city of Wayzetta.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I see the family resemblance now that you mention it.
Absolutely, yeah. I don't know the full story, but my grandfather owned that beautiful piece of property. I remember as a child coming to his dentist's office and being able to see the lake. I think the city did take the property with eminent domain.
Uh-oh.
I'd like to maybe reclaim it. I don't know.
I know not of what you speak.
Yeah, but I'm a very proud McGill.
Oh, well, we are very proud to have you.
The fact that my wife brought me here is in full circle, because this was her project.
Oh, but it is a beautiful home. It is also, you probably know this, but one of our planning commissioners owned this home, the Miriam's. So the Miriam family owned this home. And I've had the pleasure of going in it once, and I was just utterly enthralled with its beauty, the charm, just all of the elements from the era when it was built, so.
Absolutely.
Any interesting stories during, I mean, a renovation always comes with at least one good story that you can share with us.
Well, one thing that is relevant is the, the police department is gone, but Wayzetta actually has a mafia.
Really?
Because when we first purchased the house, and the first thing we did is we took away the bushes and we started making plans, people showed up with very clear opinions.
Oh, on the arborvitae that were around the front.
Right.
Yes, I remember.
And, and it was, and I'd like to say at the end, we won everybody. We had people coming back and saying, "Great job."
Yeah.
So that was, that was really fun.
You have done a beautiful, beautiful job on the home.
But I would like to say we did hope to find some money in the walls, and there was none.
Oh, darn.
Mound hole chews and some other things, but nothing of real value. A key over the door, that was it. I believe it's for good luck over doorways they used to put them in.
Oh.
So I did save that, but that's, that's about it, so.
Did you have the newspaper insulation in the walls?
Yes, we did.
Did you save any of the newspapers?
They were in pretty rough shape.
There's still some up above the garage.
Oh, the garage.
The garage still has it above, in the attic up there, but yeah, there was, our children helped us do some demolition, and they, they were going, "What's?", that's how you insulated back then.
Absolutely.
But I believe the garage probably came at a much later date. It'd be interesting to find out. I have not looked to see if they did have some sort of carriage house back in the day, but I haven't had a chance to check, but we'll see.
That's interesting. I always liked seeing the, the old ads and the crime reports from the old papers from back then that they used for insulation.
Right.
Wonderful.
Somewhere. Oh, the ones in, up in the, above the garage, yeah, I flipped through it and you'd kind of look at the dates and, yeah.
But yeah, like I said, I don't think that was from 1917. That was from a later time, so.
Wonderful. Any other big plans for the home? Or are we putting renovations to the?
Well, we differ on some things. I actually would like to, you know, with ADUs being allowed in Wayzetta now, the garage, you know, probably needs new windows, new, there's some things that should be done to the garage. I would like to take it down in the near future and put like an ADU, like a little apartment above it, structure. It's got somewhat of a structure out there, but to really, to remodel it, it would just cost as much to tear it down and rebuild it. So that's what you struggle with, I think, if anybody's ever remodeled an older home. By the time you try and remodel it, it's going to cost you probably more than it would be to just tear it down and remodel, so.
Yeah.
And we all see the house across the street is, I think, coming down this week, so.
It is, on the corner there.
Mm-hmm.
Well, thank you again, both, for, for.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. So, no, it's a great house, and when you look at it now in that picture, what's interesting is that people can't tell where the addition was.
Mm-hmm.
You know, she really blended it in to the point, people think it was like that 1917, and so that's what really turned out great on it, so.
The addition, the piece on the left?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the piece on the left. And if I, if you didn't know too, we dug down that basement about 20 inches. So, you know, back in the day, that wasn't, you know, basements really, really used for much, so that got dug down as well.
Well, thank you both again, very much. Congratulations. Thank you for your commitment to preserving history. And I also want to thank the Wayzetta Heritage Preservation Board for their work as well, their volunteerism and, and reviving this project. So thank you all very much. Have a great night. All right. We are still in public forum. Do we have anybody on Zoom who is interested in speaking?
Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. And have we received any cards from anyone?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor.
Chomping at the bit? All right. Then we will move on from the public forum to new agenda items. Members of the council, any new agenda items for discussion at a later meeting? No?
No.
All right. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. I have a few items here to read. First up, we have approval of the city council workshop and regular meeting minutes of April 9, 2024, approval of the check register, approval of municipal licenses, receipt of police activity report, receipt of our building activity report. We have authorized submission of a grant application to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, MPCA, for a city operations climate adaptation and resilience plan, approval of speaking agreement with Jen Gumbel for employee wellness program, adoption of Resolution 12-2024 approving development agreement and final plat for Harbors of Wayzetta at 1405 Holdridge Terrace and 15419 and 15429 Wayzetta Boulevard East, formerly Cantissimo. We have approval of the embedded social worker joint powers agreement with Hennepin County Human Services Department, approval of professional services agreement with Walker Consultants for parking technology consulting and procurement services related to access management for the Mill Street parking ramp. And lastly, approval of the second reading and adoption of ordinance 836, amending City Code Chapter 309, use of public parks and Chapter 318 municipal docks. Council, any questions on any of those items, or would anyone care to pull an item for further discussion and add it to new business later in the evening? Anybody?
I do, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Iverson?
I have two, please.
Yes, which?
H is just a comment, and J, I would like to pull for further discussion.
Okay, so item H, your question or comment?
My, my comment is, is the developer in the audience? Thank you. I drive by this site every day, and I still have a really hard time. I know it's been approved, so I just want to state that, but I drive by it every day, and I have a very hard time visually understanding how that size of a building is going to fit on that land. And so I'm asking to please be diligent in your wetland mitigation and protection because of how close it buffers up to that wetland. It's such a beautiful resource, that area back there is beautiful, there's a lot of big homes or homes that see that in their backyard, and so please take every precaution necessary to protect that. So that's my comment, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Iverson. And you wish to pull item J for, do you want to pull that and discuss it under new business?
Yes, please.
Okay, and what's the nature of the, let's determine if.
Cost, the overall cost, and are we sure that this is the right solution for the issue that we're seeing at the parking ramp?
Okay. Very good. Other members of the council, any thoughts on pulling item J to add to new business?
I agree.
Okay. Any concern? All right. So we will pull item J, we will add that on to the end of the agenda this evening under new business. So that leaves us with items A through I and K for approval under the consent agenda. Would someone care to make that motion?
Madam Mayor, I just want to make a note, we did send out the, to the council, if anybody at home wants to look at the application that we're going to be filling out if the consent agenda is approved and we move forward with the MPCA grant. Just for the record, though, I wanted to make that note, we did add the application for people, for the council and for the public to review.
So it is online?
It will be.
Added?
It will be.
Okay. So thank you for bringing that up, because, yeah, that was a miss on our part on the, that should have been posted. My question with regard to item F, is there anything, I obviously didn't have a chance to read it, it was, we went straight from one meeting straight to this one. Is there anything in that grant application that holds us to certain expenditures beyond our share that we would, if we were granted the grant, if we win the grant, beyond the $2,500 that we have to contribute financially? Does that commit us to anything financially in the future?
Madam Mayor, it all depends on what's ultimately approved or awarded by the state, but that will come back to you in an agreement where the council will have the ability, if it doesn't meet the intent of what we approved tonight, that you can say no.
And turn down the grant?
Correct.
So there could be terms associated with that grant?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Very good. So, but for the here and now, this is just to submit for the grant? All right, very good. So looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through I and K.
So moved, so moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
I forgot my aye.
Oh. I, I wasn't sure if it was just a little tiny aye. All right. And then J, we are going to move. All right, perfect. So let's move on to new business. And under, the first item under new business is to consider award of contract to Ferguson Waterworks for the water meter replacement project, city manager.
Madam Mayor, city engineer and public works director Kelly is going to walk us through this real brief presentation, more really about just promoting this action to the, to the council, but also the community, but Mr. Kelly's going to walk us through it.
Thank you, Jeff. Madam Mayor and Council, can you hear me?
Uh, not, not really.
It is kind of quiet.
It is. I can, I can hear you, but I don't think it's being picked up by the mic.
Maybe Fred can, there, thank you, Fred. The magic of Fred.
The magic of Fred.
Jeff did a great job of summarizing. We've been talking about upgrading our water meters for a long time, and this is a great opportunity, not only to come to you with our most recent bidding results, but to sort of present the project to the public, to inform them that we are intending to replace about two-thirds of our meters in town. Since our project back in 2002, we have had the opportunity over time to replace about a third of our meters, but two-thirds still needs to be done. That's about 1,200 of our meters overall, and we plan to do that over the next three years. Our specifications that we put out for our prospective bidders required that the software that they provide for us to be able to manipulate our meter reading and processing of billing worked not only with a new product, but obviously with our existing product. And so that's how it was presented. The meters that are presented with our vendor that we've had, our sole vendor that bid on the project, these are what they'll look like. It's really not a whole lot different than what you would see in your home today. The technology is still the same. It's going to be a radio read. Our staff will drive through the neighborhood. It reads a signal from each of the meters, provides that information to us, we upload it to the system, it processes the bills, and then we send them off to each of the residents. Last week, we had five contractors that actually picked up and reviewed our bid package. However, only one bid on the project. That bidder was Ferguson Waterworks. The bid was broken out three different ways. One was for the contractor to install 100% of those 1,200 meters. They bid $834,486.19. We did also have two alternates, really just wanting to understand costs. At the end of the day, I would prefer that our staff have the time to perform their normal routine tasks, and we allow the contractor to finish that, but if the contractor were to perform 75%, there's an associated price, and 50% of the meters with an associated price. My recommendation would be to proceed with the base bid of 834,000. Obviously, if the project is awarded tonight, we intend to work with the contractor to provide a communication plan to our residents and our businesses that have meters that need to be replaced. Ferguson, in their bid, has proposed that they'll assist with such measures as a dedicated website, a portal for people to be able to call in and schedule their appointments, whether it's via a portal or a phone call to the contractor to be able to do that. We'll design some sort of door hanger or postcard that can go out to the public. There may be others. But really, once the project gets going, we'll start working on those things. With our staff, the public works staff, we're going to try to narrow down how we're going to break it up. Is it going to be a third of the city? Are we going to start with commercial businesses? We haven't yet fully determined that, but we'll be working with the contract and contractor and inform the appropriate section of our community for each of the years. That being said, our staff, we recommend that we award the contract to Ferguson Waterworks in the amount of $834,486.19 for our water meter replacement project, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you, Director Kelly. Questions of staff?
Just one. Mike, I just can't remember, since we did our CIP funding so long ago. Is this dollar amount in your budget?
Well, we have allocated in our budget, as I mentioned when I came to you a little over a month ago, is we have about $650,000 that was specifically allocated for this. When we knew that the cost estimate was going to be a little bit higher than that, Deputy City Manager Jaeger and I looked over our CIPs and determined that our, both our sewer and water CIPs can accommodate the additional costs.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. Anything else? So if I understand correctly, this bid would allow for Ferguson Waterworks to do the replacement, so enter into the residential or commercial properties and replace the water meters.
That's correct.
And what, can you talk a little bit about what their process is for their employees? So this is all by Ferguson Waterworks employees, they're not subbing it out to anybody else, correct?
That's correct.
What is their process for ensuring that their employees are upstanding? We, all of our employees go through background checks, they're going to be entering people's homes, so what kind of communication, what kind of background checks have they been through, and what kind of identification are they going to be wearing that people need to be aware of?
Yeah, as part of the overall communication plan, we intend to state that Ferguson Waterworks is going to be the contractor that will be installing the meters. We will expect that they have some sort of identification that says Ferguson Waterworks. We expect that via that phone call or portal with the, the scheduling, that somebody knows that it's Jim that is supposed to be coming on a particular day at a particular time. I will state to our community that if you're not comfortable with having a contractor come in and do it, our staff will be happy to assist with that. We understand that there are We understand that there are some community members that enjoy having our staff come assist them with various things, and we're happy to provide that service as well. Knowing that we are hiring somebody to do the majority of the work, we would like to keep that limited, but at the same time, we do want to offer our services if people feel more comfortable with the city. But we will, and via their bid package, have provided references and background checks and those types.
So that, that is in the contract that we will be signing that they provide background, that they do background checks on their employees? And do we lay out criteria of what is acceptable and what is not?
I don't know that we've gone to that detail in our specifications, but if that's something that you, as the council, would like us to talk with Ferguson Waterworks about doing, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, staff, city attorney, at what point would those discussions, I mean, I would leave it to staff to make that determination in terms of what that threshold should be, based on what we hold ourselves to and what we know our community expects. I don't think that's for us to try and figure out here at the dais of what's appropriate, but I would like to see, you know, a very clear understanding of what this contractor does, what our expectations are, that it's laid out contractually, and that we can then communicate that to our residents and our commercial property owners of their employees that will be coming to make the appointment have passed a background check and so on and so forth, so. Any thoughts on how we can do that, that's within our purview to do as well?
Certainly, Madam Mayor, and I think your word to staff will follow up on that and get the details from this contractor if you do award the bid, and make sure that that's all as it should be.
Okay, very good.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Councilmember Parkill.
Related to that, Director Kelly, I was assuming this meter was outside, like in a vault in the front yard or something like that? This is in the house?
Yes, these are, these are the meters located typically within someone's basement.
Okay.
Yeah, so there, you're very right, I mean, there, we may have some residents who would prefer to have a familiar face from staff come in, and so they might be able to accompany somebody from
Absolutely.
From them, so, perfect, okay, thank you. All right, seeing that there are no further questions, would someone care to make a motion to award the contract to Ferguson Waterworks for the water meter replacement project in the amount of $834,486.19? Make that motion, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember McDonald, then a second? Second? Then first and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have, under new business, the approval of the school resource officer agreement with Wayzata Public School District. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Police Chief Schultz is going to walk us through this item.
Green is good.
Green is good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the item for you tonight is to consider the approval of the school resource officer agreement between the Wayzata Public Schools and the Wayzata Police Department. A little bit of a historical background, the Wayzata Police Department's provided onsite school resource officer services for the Wayzata School District at the Wayzata West Middle School for several years. Recently, the state legislature passed an education omnibus bill during their May 2023 session containing some confusing and ambiguous language that was concerning for many of us in law enforcement. It addressed school resource officers allowed use of force in conflict with the state, the current previous standard that would have been in use for many years, the requirements provided by Minnesota State Statute 60906. And as a result, the SRO position, because of this confusion, because of this ambiguity and differings of opinion among some legal recommendations that positioned at the West Middle School was suspended until the expectations could be clarified. Take the next slide, thank you. During this current legislative session, the legislature addressed the issue by passing a new bill that amends the authorization for the use of force to apply to situations where it's necessary to restrain the child or pupil to prevent bodily harm or death, and clarifies that school resource officers have the authority to use reasonable force as specified in the use of force sections of law, Minnesota Section 60906, as in all of the years of our careers. With this new bill and with the consistent communication with school district officials throughout the process, the police department is pleased to again enter into a contract and provide the Wayzata School District with an SRO at the Wayzata West Middle School. So this current proposed contract uses roughly the same language as our previous contracts, with a few caveats that have changed, mainly in statutory mandates that were provided by this last bill that relate to both duties and training for SROs. All language in this contract is in line with our policies, likewise as was in the past, our policies at the police department, and is also similar to the language in the contract for the city of Plymouth for their SROs, as they have also SROs in the district as well. I'd certainly be happy to stand for any questions you may have, but with that, staff recommends approval of the school resource officer agreement with the Wayzata Public Schools.
Excellent, thank you Chief Schultz. Questions of staff? So, assuming this passes this evening, when will our SRO officially begin their duties? We're almost into summer break.
Yeah, it's time slipping away. So, we have received word from the school that once our, once our agreement passes, they will then bring that to the school board, and with the caveat that we're on board. And once that passes, then we can, you know, get the signatures and move toward staffing. I suspect probably the middle of May is, you know, given time, you've got to have officers' schedules change a little bit, work those dates out, payroll types of things. We'd like to get our officer in there as soon as possible, and I think the middle of May would be that time.
So we would effectively have someone at the school between presumably mid-May to end of June?
Yeah, and, and that's not a bad thing, because even though it's a short duration of time, it allows them to get their feet wet, meet people, you know, interact with the current day officer, who would be our previous school resource officer to sort of show them around. And get a, get a, kind of a leg up on next year, and come in full force and feel comfortable.
Fantastic, okay. Very good, well, seeing that there are, thank you, by the way, Chief Schultz, I know that this was, you know, at the conclusion of the last legislative session, it caught us all a little bit off guard, and certainly weren't expecting that, both school districts and police departments who provide services. So, a lot of discussion and a lot of negotiation on, on many, many parts as part of what was passed last year, so I'm glad to see that everybody was able to keep open minds and open hearts and come to some understanding and agreement that everybody benefits from at the end of the day and feels more comfortable with, so thank you for all that hard work. To you and your colleagues. All right, would someone care to make a motion then to approve this school resource officer agreement with the Wayzata Public Schools?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and a second? Second? Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion passes, thank you very much. And then, now we will take on the item from the consent agenda that Councilmember Iverson asked to pull, and that is approval of the professional services agreement with Walker Consultants for parking technology consulting and procurement services related to access management for the Mill Street Parking Ramp. City manager.
Yeah, happy to answer any questions that the council has. Fortunately, this project was, has really been led by Director Kelly, but also with a lot of input from myself and Chief Schultz, so you have the right people in the room to answer any questions. Ultimately, we got direction in March to move forward with this stage, so again, happy to answer any questions.
We have the trifecta, wonderful. Councilmember Iverson, your questions?
Well, I'm so glad I have all the right young men in place. I'm going to just give a little rationale as to why I pulled this, and then hopefully my other council members will. I know everyone will weigh in on their opinion on this. So, I'm looking at, we have two different options that are in front of us. One is just automated gate closing, goats too maybe, and then a pay parking system that we're looking at. In the documentation, it states that the, it would start to close at 4:00 PM, but vehicles that are parked in there will have access to leave. So I have a couple, a couple concerns. So we have rationale as to the advantages and the disadvantages. There's some that I'm concerned that aren't even addressed yet, so I'd like to bring those up as well. My biggest thing is, I don't know if it's going to change behavior. The pay for parking one may not, they may go through and pay and park, the loiterers, which I think is one of the biggest issues. My concern with the one that closes at four, we have the boardwalk that will be opening Memorial Day weekend. We don't know the amount of visitors that that's going to bring. If we close that and don't allow people to go in after four o'clock, I'm very concerned about the limitations that we're putting on our parking, and the stress already on the parking or lack of parking for really the peak hours when this seems to be an issue, which is the summer months. As soon as the weather gets nice, we seem to have people that like to hang out there, gather there, meet friends there, do things that they shouldn't do there, et cetera, et cetera. I would like us to talk about perhaps, I see in the documentation, one of the options was perhaps look at having a security guard. I did some quick calculation, you estimate it to be about $100 an hour. At 15, if they worked Thursday through Saturday, came out at four, or five to 10, that'd be about 60 hours a week. Over a June through September periods, about 240 hours, at $100 an hour is about $24,000. My recommendation is, I think we should try something that's not as permanent first. Because again, I don't know what the impact for all the visitors coming, I read a lot of stuff online or comments about how much people love Wayzata, but parking's an issue. Parking's an issue, parking's an issue. I'm concerned that we're creating another parking issue, and perhaps there's other way to solve the issue that we're trying to solve. So a security guard could be an option. We could pick the hours based off of what you see, Police Chief Schultz. Perhaps, a drive-through every hour or every couple hours by a police officer would also help alleviate some of the situation of people hanging out there and doing some things that are not appropriate. When I was a young girl, we used to gather, I think it's common, kids are kids. They want to meet, they want to know what's going on, what people are going to do. And he would, our local guy would drive through the parking lot, and like, okay guys, time to wrap it up, time to move on. And it worked. And so I'm asking council to have another discussion tonight to see if there's some other options we want to implement, or at least put this off until we understand the impact of the boardwalk. So we have two big proposals, if we move forward with one cost, the gate closing after two, after four, it's $60,000. But if we do two gates, it's $120,000. There's additional maintenance cost, we're estimating it at $10,000, but we don't know. The pay for parking one is significantly higher. I think we could look at some temporary solutions, they may not cost the city as much money.
Madam Paul?
Yep, no, thank you Councilmember Iverson, City manager.
Councilmember Iverson, Madam Mayor, we can certainly go back and kind of revisit the main kind of options in order to kind of address the issues that we've seen at the parking ramp. Just to be clear though, tonight's requested action is just for one of those options, and that is just for the $60,000 for the, the gate or the arm on the, the deck, so the upper deck. Those, the security, the other paid stuff, those are a part of that report that was reviewed in March. We can, we can certainly discuss those at any time, but we just request based on the direction of the council in March and our internal discussions to move forward with the $60,000 option of just for the one gate. And I think there's a lot of fair points you made, I just want to clarify though, with parking, our intent is not to eliminate prime parking spots at all. This would, would ultimately be later in the evening when parking is less of an issue, and we have documentation that supports that. So the four o'clock, that was just part of their testing, when they, they did that study previously. But our, you know, just like the paid parking on the boats, we'll play around with it, but our intention is not to limit parking for our downtown business owners.
So, City manager, what would be the hours then that you would propose to have that gate? Not allow people to come in?
Well, like I said, I think we'd play around with it, but I'm looking at the chief and Director Kelly here, I think we've talked about when, you know, when people stop coming into town and they're leaving, so that's usually around seven, eight o'clock, but.
I, I would say it's going to be somewhat flexible depending on the season.
Yeah.
I, I can say, and I'm sure the chief can comment as well, we've already had two incidents this year with loitering that turned into graffiti. And I've looked at some video that I'm still trying to find to get to the, the police department, so that hopefully we can catch these people. Interestingly enough, those people that are loitering happen to be in their cars, lights off, officers drive through unnoticed, and it only takes 10 or 15 minutes and they're done painting, which is crazy. And I think our intent, through our discussions, has been to try to deter them from wanting to go in there in the first place. Could they go in there up the stairs? Absolutely. But can we minimize the amount of people that are gathering in vehicles at the dark end of the, the parking ramp at 10, 11, midnight, 1, that, that's our goal. And I think as we work through maybe summer hours, maybe it's eight o'clock at night, during the winter hours, maybe it's six o'clock at night, when it's dark. But during the winter hours, the upper deck isn't used to the same degree that it is during the summer. So I think we have, with this project, the intent to have some flexibility. We also want to be able to control it if we needed to, if a police officer feels that there's activity that's going on, wants to close it up for the night, that they have the ability to close it up when they feel it's appropriate. We may close it up in the winter on a Saturday after we've gotten six inches of snow, so that people don't go in there and drive and allow us the opportunity to get in there and clean it up. So, that's, that's kind of the goal. We think that this project as it's proposed gives us the flexibility. If we want to leave it open, we simply just have a median in the middle of the driveway.
So if there is events and we need overflow parking? Okay.
Absolutely, we will, we will have control of when it's open and closed.
I mean, I'm glad that you're specifying and you discussed that it would be later at night, because people, people spend time down here in the evening, it's beautiful at the lake and the, when it's dark. And I just wouldn't want somebody to come in at nine o'clock at night thinking that, you know, I'm going to find a place to park, and they go there and the ramp has got a gate you can't get in. I just think it sends the wrong message, and so that, that's, it's a big concern of mine. Again, this is such an unknown. And so that's, it's a big concern of mine. Again, this is such an unknown year as to what kind of behavior we're going to see and what that's going to look like. Is there other solutions we could do for this year until we get our head around the impact from the boardwalk? I guess is the conversation I'd like to have tonight with the rest of the council.
And if I could just clarify, we're at a point here in April, almost May, where we're looking to have our consultant design project and put it out for bids, and then they need to build it, that we can push the construction off towards the end of the season to implement our project. I think we'd like to get it in sooner than later to try to experiment with it, but at the end of the day, we do have that flexibility. So by the time we get it designed and put out for bid, we're going to, we'll still have to come back to you for a word of a contract with a contractor. So there'll still be one more step through the council.
Okay. Well, I think, Councilmember Iverson, I'll just speak for myself, you know, over the years since Panway's been built, some of, or definitely since the parking ramp has been built, a lot of the feedback that we've gotten from the constituents, our residents that live up above, was some of the, you know, we'll just call it bad behaviors of, you know, a younger contingent who decided to loiter there. And our police officers have been very diligent, but we also have limited staffing and, you know, while you and I may have reacted differently if we were told to scurry along and go home, not everybody today does, and they wait until, they're smart, they're smart kiddos, young people. They wait till the police officers leave, and then they turn around and they go right back in, right? And we can't be there all the time. What I like about this plan, be it now, in a month, in sixty days, ninety days, it gives us a tool. It gives us a tool to learn more about behaviors. It gives the police officers a tool in public works to be able to do their jobs more effectively, and I think safely, and also to be responsive to our residents. Our residents have said, you know, we try to be patient, we try to be understanding, we raise kids, we know what it's like to be a kid, but we're also trying to live here, and this goes beyond the pale of, you know, these are young people who, not all, because I've seen some very respectful, you know, great young people up there playing, you know, catch or something like that with no ill intent whatsoever, but not everybody's behaving that way. And unfortunately, it's those few that are making it, you know, more difficult. So I am in favor of proceeding and with the understanding that we are just going to have to be particularly vigilant of how it's operating, what's working well, where, you know, we need to maybe hit the pause button and say, okay, we need to regroup and reassess, because there are going to be some things in flux over the next couple of months. So, yes, Councilmember Parkill?
I have a couple of quick questions. If we go with the sixty, does that reduce the one fifteen if we ever want to go to pay for parking?
I would assume so, yes, because the main infrastructure that goes into constructing the median with the gates is a part of that overall one fifteen. We would, the solution that we're proposing right now offers the flexibility of adding the, I'll call it the technology of a pay system.
Just wondering if there's a way to stub it out or something, so if you're running electric under there, put another one in in case we want to add that.
All the electric should be provided to be able to operate the gate, so I think it should be pretty straightforward.
Have we, is this something we would ever consider as an alternate source of revenue, like on Wayzata, you know, the art weekend and that sort of thing, VIP parking and, you know, twenty-five bucks and that kind of thing? Has anybody ever considered that as a potential way to pay this down, or?
I don't know that we've thought about it in that particular way, but obviously, if we were to progress to a pay system, we understood that that would be an additional revenue to the city.
Yeah, I was just thinking for a one-night thing, you could just have a guy stand in there too. But the last question is, how are we paying for this? Wasn't there some TIF money set aside that would be allocatable to this? Is that, City Manager, is that?
Councilmember Parkill, this is completely funded by our downtown parking fund, which is funded through Philop and some of the other parking-specific funds the city has accrued over the past five years. So it's not general fund dollars at all.
Okay.
Which pays for maintenance for the ramp and all of these types of things.
And we have adequate funds in there.
We do. We have a surplus there that is ultimately to be used for this type of project and maintenance and operations.
I think we should go ahead and see if this helps. I don't know that it's going to be a complete solution, but I think it could really help. And it also shows the residents above that we're trying to do stuff.
Yeah. Great. And with regard to the payment, I mean, we've talked about that for the last couple of years, exploring on big days like James J. Hill days and the Art Experience or where we have big events planned of potentially having pay or valet or something, but it's controlled access. So for that purpose and to put into the fund and whatever the case may be. Councilmember McDonald, any thoughts on the Panway District Committee who's heard these concerns?
You guys really, fellow colleagues up here have, I think, covered all of my concerns I had with it, and I too saw four PM and saw red immediately, but I'm glad to know, be reassured again tonight that that's a very flexible time, and will be cognizant of our business neighbors and make sure their customers can park. So I support this initiative too, and think that our residents up above will, again, be happy to see some effort and a tool for the PD.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Well, Councilmember Iverson, thank you for pulling that and for the good discussion. I think it's part of the process and process works when we can have those good conversations. So thank you for that.
Yeah. And Madam Mayor, and after the discussion, I too am going to support this. I'm thankful for the flexibility, and if it does, again, help our neighbors above and it helps our police force, I will fully get behind this as well.
Wonderful. Great. All right. So the last item of business then, for this item would be for someone to make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Walker Consultants for Parking Technology Consulting and Procurement Services related to access management for the Mill Street parking ramp.
Make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember McDonald. Then a second?
Second.
The motion has been first and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, oh, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. The motion passes. I'm not sure what they're chuckling about, but I bet it's good. Okay.
I made her second that one because she had polled it.
Oh, gotcha. Oh, good, good. Well done.
This is all yours, lady.
Well played. All right. We are done with new business, which takes us to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Three quick things. One is a reminder, we have yet another election going on right now. It's the primary for the open county commissioner seat, so we have absentee or early voting going on right now. We'll be open on Saturday to facilitate that as well. And the actual election day, our primary day, is on Tuesday. So again, I can't thank City Clerk Leirvig, Lori Crismer, Jenny Myron, and all the election crew that does such a stellar job. Very busy election year this year, and this is just one of many elections. So that's going on. Earth Day is on Saturday. I don't know if it's on Saturday, actually. Yesterday?
I think it was yesterday.
Okay. Sorry, I should have done that, I should have known that beforehand, but we are having an Earth Day event to celebrate yesterday's big day. So Saturday, April 27th, out on the plaza, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, the Energy and Environment Committee of the city will lead an event that will feature two educational speakers that will focus on native plants, pollinators, and pollinator-friendly lawns. So there'll also be a drawing for a free rain barrel for those that attend. So encourage you to, there's a lot more interest these days, especially for, you know, no mo may and all those other kind of creative ways to create a more resilient earth. So stop by if you can. Hopefully we'll have good weather out on the Panway. And then lastly, Saturday, I think it's May 4th, yes, Saturday, May 4th, May 4th, May the Fourth be with you, day, is Spring Cleanup Day. So Randy's Sanitation works with the city crews, and they'll be going up around any essentially utility payer and cleaning up any house, small household appliances, other things.
General household goods, but there are some fees.
Junk day, yeah. I didn't want to say it, but yeah.
No, it's Spring Cleanup Day.
Appliances and electronics do have a small fee.
Yes. So they can reach out to?
Randy's.
Is it still Randy's?
Republic.
Republic Services?
Yeah.
Yes, who can break down the different fees. So if even some of the larger items, they'll take, but you have to schedule it in advance.
Correct.
A fee.
And for Saturday, where they go around to all addresses, that'll start at 7:00 AM. So get it out the day before.
Yes. Well, it's okay. You get it out a couple days before, and it'll probably be gone before Republic has a chance to pick it up, because people are.
Resourceful.
They're living the reduce, reuse, and recycle mantra. So, excellent. All right. Any other big events? No. Anything from the council? No? All right. Well, then how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second? Anybody?
Second.
There we go. First and second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion passes. We are adjourned.